Good morning. I will now call to order the Tuesday, January seventeen, twenty twenty-three Town Council Meeting. If you would, please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the approval of the memorandum of the January third, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting. A copy has been posted. Are there any questions or discussions from councilors? I also want to take a motion to approve. First by Councilor Melton, second by Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Up next is the approval of the two thousand and twenty-two year end claims. You guys will remember we had those continued from the last meeting. Are there any questions from councilors?
Just a second. I had a question. I can't remember if it was on which set of claims it was on. It's a general question essentially anyway, so maybe I can ask it before either set. So we had, I made a note here that we are engineering budget on the one oh one forty-three, one twenty line item. We're currently for two thousand and twenty-two, we're over budget by about three hundred thousand dollars. And we've got in these claims, we've got about forty-five thousand dollars of additional engineering from that line item. I didn't see that in the reappropriation for two thousand and twenty-two, so I was just curious how that gets cured up at the end.
I'd have to take a look. I don't have that in front of me. I'd have to take a look at it.
All right. All right. Well, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the appropriation schedule as well. That was very helpful. I am curious, are we on, are we on the new system now?
Not yet, but voice is coming back today, and I'm hoping that with, you know, today, tomorrow, next couple of days, that we'll start inputting the two thousand and twenty-three claims and that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions from councilors? I'll make a motion to approve two thousand and twenty-two year end claims. Second. Was that you? Yes. Second by Councilor Colton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Up next would be the approval of the January seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three claims. Are there any questions from councilors? This one was pretty short, it looks like. Any questions for anybody? I'll make a motion to approve those as well. Second, second by Councilor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a request to speak on agenda items. Amy, do we have any requests to speak?
No, we do not.
Very good. Up next would be mayor administration update, and I did not get anything from the mayor or the administration. So moving on to council update, are there any updates from councilors?
Yes, I did have a discussion with deputy mayor regarding the nineteen thousand that was spent from the Food and Beverage Fund on a nonprofit in Lebanon. Essentially, they, and I also have some email correspondence, but what I was told is the administration mayor, I'm sorry, the administration attorney feels like this does qualify for the Food and Beverage Fund. However, I greatly disagree. The Food and Beverage Fund is only to be spent for the promotion of Zionsville and the businesses involved. And in the enrichment grant website, they state something completely different than what is allowable in the ordinance for the Food and Beverage Fund for the town. So at this point, I think we have put in place the guardrails to keep this from happening in the future by essentially making sure that everybody that gets a Food and Beverage Fund grant comes before the town council in the future so that we can keep this from happening again. But they disagree, and that's where we stand. So that's all I've got on that one. The other is I still have not received anything back from my public records requests looking for information on the Van Gorder insurance claim, nor have I gotten any update on where we stand on that. So if anybody has one, I'd love to hear it. Thus far, I keep beating my head against this wall, and I'm getting no information. The phrase, I don't know, or I can only send you what I'm allowed to send you, was brought up, and that was a little concerning to me that I'm a town counselor, I should have access to this information. So I have nothing on that, unfortunately. So if there's any update, I'd love to hear it.
Well, and for what it's worth, Heather, if I start to speak out of line, if you would rein me back in. So having heard nothing myself and having invited the council from, who was representing Zurich and the town, I reached out to them on Friday to the adjuster and was told that he has a report and that he would be reaching out to the Fire Chief's legal team and the mayor's legal team this week. Now, with that being said, I will also say that I've asked that particular attorney to show up to the last two town council meetings, and those emails have gone ignored. So at this point, I don't know if we call an executive session. I don't know that he'll show up. But I'm getting the same type of response Councilor Trailer is getting in that whenever I ask questions, I get communication that they're talking to the attorney, attorneys, but we're not getting communicated with at all. Yeah. So am I out of line in saying that or communicating that at all?
No, none at all. And I know that Councilor Plunkett also reached out to Mark Cranley, who's a partner of mine who worked on this originally. And I believe Mark is also looking into it and trying to reach out to the attorney to see if, you know, we can have attorney-to-attorney conversation as well. I followed up with Mark last night on that, so.
Yeah, I think the troubling part for me, and maybe this is where you should rein me in if I get going too far, is I don't believe that this is being handled in good faith.
No, I don't either.
And that's where I have a problem. And when I communicate with someone with the insurance company or with our insurance agent, with the insurance company, or with the person handling the claim, and I'm told that everyone is congruent in wanting to get this settled. And the reality is, we all know that we're not all congruent in wanting to get this settled, and I would like to have that done as quickly as possible, so.
Yeah, and yeah, based on, wow. I think at some, I mean, we keep getting told the same thing every week is that somebody's going to talk to somebody's attorney or has been talking to somebody's attorney, and yeah, this is the fifth meeting, I think, or yeah, fourth or fifth meeting in a row that we've had no update.
So maybe, maybe the, and I'm just thinking this through, Heather, maybe the answer is we just put this on the agenda. Whoever, our chief's attorneys, Mr. McLaughlin, whoever, put everybody on the agenda.
Yeah, I saw your follow-up notice. Well, I mean, we can reach out again to see if they would attend an executive session since that's an allowable exception is, you know, in negotiating settlement or.
Okay. I feel like we are intentionally being left out of this. I mean, quite frankly.
Okay, I'll follow up with Mark. I'll try to get a communication. Brian, I'll include you as well.
Specific to the other item that Councilor Trailer brought up, the food and beverage. I mean, I've seen the emails back and forth as well, and I've looked on the website of this particular organization, and it says nothing about Zionsville at all. Doesn't say anything about promoting Zionsville. Doesn't say anything about having anything in Zionsville. Or do we run, Heather, the risk of, I mean, if the ordinance only allows for money to be spent for the purposes that Trailer's mentioned, do we run the risk of having, are, would the State Board of Accounts not like this? Would DLGF not like this? Like, who would, is this something we need to rectify?
Yeah, so typically, you know, it is an allowable expense under the statute, but the statute allows for the town to be more restrictive, and so the ordinance is more restrictive than state statute. So we're not running afoul of any state statute per se. I did have an opportunity to talk with Amy Noonan, who is counsel to the mayor's administration on Thursday or Friday of last week about this. She did share with me that, you know, they were, this organization is actually doing some programming in Zionsville schools, including a play or a theater performance in one of the elementary schools that's set for the spring. I've not seen any further details other than that conversation, and I was under the impression maybe that was being shared back with Councilor Trailer, or maybe had been at some point, about what the actual expenditure was for. I would say I don't think we need to do anything further at this time in terms of any kind of clawback. I do think we need to probably ask all of our recipients, and perhaps they're already doing this, you know, to document their expenditures so we can in fact see how they are supporting the community and if that money was, you know, given to that organization, that we have that documentation on a go-forward basis that, you know, those expenditures align to whatever programming is, you know, being offered in the Zionsville community or expansion of programming. And then we did also talk about, you know, on a go-forward basis, making sure, even if the committee is making recommendations for specific grants, those actual approved expenditures, a grant amount, do need to come back before the council for approval as part of our, you know, claims process, and so making sure that process is tightened up. So we have that next time that would give public, you know, transparency into the decision-making and then also a level of accountability for the organizations to be able to explain, you know, that purpose in advance of the money being spent. So that's kind of recommendations. I don't know that we need to clawback or do anything from that perspective.
No, the, the expense was for microphones, just for the record. I'm fully aware of what the expense was. They got nineteen thousand dollars for microphones. And they, it's, their theater is in Lebanon. It draws people to Lebanon. I guess, and I know that we can't do a clawback or we won't do a clawback. But it's, the, the claims process is good, but we will have to have the presenters here so we can ask some questions. But then also, before it makes it to claims, the mayor is obligating the town through a grant contract that she is signing before it gets on the claims.
That should happen after the claim has been.
Oh, I know. I'm aware it should happen after, but I'm curious how that impacts our claims going forward. If we're already obligated legally by contract and we we deny the claim, how that, how that works. So I don't know. It's a mess.
Quick comment, Ryan. So just again, I want to reiterate that Zionsville needs to get internal controls put in place where the town council will approve these, and that's fine. That's what we need to do. But I just want to reiterate that this organization does serve Zionsville. Through, through my neighbors, my neighbors go to this organization. So I, you know, you said they serve Lebanon. It's in Lebanon. It's located in Lebanon, but it does serve Zionsville residents. Zionsville residents are some of the actors and actresses. So I just want to reiterate that and then backtrack to, we need internal controls to stop the administration from signing this contract and then moving it forward, and I agree with that.
So, so I'm curious because I asked the mayor's attorney this question, and she couldn't or wouldn't. She hasn't responded. But there's two criteria for the Zionsville Food and Beverage Fund that have to be met. It, the only thing these funds can be spent for is public facility or infrastructure improvement in the town of Zionsville.
Good.
Would you agree that this does not meet that?
I, yes, I agree that it's located in Lebanon, Indiana.
All right. So it does not meet that criteria. The second criteria is fund initiatives intended to promote the town and its businesses. And then it goes on to say, these are the only two criteria. So how does it meet the fund initiatives intended to promote the town and its business?
So, so again, in this particular case, I agree with you solely on both of these that it's not meeting these two criteria. The fact that the money's been allocated, the money's been spent, whose fault is that? It's the town of Zionsville's fault. It's our fault for letting this administration get out of hand. It's our fault that we approve claims that are already paid.
All right. It just sounded like you were defending the spend, so.
No, I'm defending the organization. I just feel bad for the organization.
I've never said anything derogatory about the organization.
But they do serve Zionsville, is all I'm saying. My, I have several neighbors.
There's a, there's a difference still between serve and promote. The ordinance requires promote.
I agree. The, the, the language down here, promote, is different than, than serving. So I just, I just want everybody to be clear. That's my position. The process is failing. That's my point.
Any other council updates? I'll give a brief update based on the last meeting we had, last few meetings we've had, and really the last three years. I reached out to Baker Tilly and talked to them a little bit about the opportunity to have an independent audit firm or an independent audit team come in and answer to the town council. It's their belief that we have the ability, under our reorganization, to pull together an independent audit team to work with our finance department and answer to the town council to do just what you're talking about, Craig, answer to the council specific to processes and procedures. And, and that's something that Heather and I are working on now as it relates to how that gets funded, how that gets, you know, the, if, time and time again, we've made comments about the finances in the town, and time and time again, we've been told by the administration that there's nothing wrong with the finances. So if we can get a contract from Baker Tilly, I'm going to forward that to the mayor, and if the mayor has no problems with it, I would imagine she would sign it. So the ball will certainly be her court in that regard. However, from there, it's something that, again, my understanding is we can do what's in the frameworks for a reorg, so.
Are they not responding to?
No, no. We had a conversation, we've had a couple of conversations about it, and I think we're just in a spot where we've got, Heather and I have to figure out the contract and figure out what we're looking for and, you know, how that, how that works. Yeah, certainly. All right, up next is old business. First time in old business is a consideration of approval of job descriptions. This is for Director and Deputy Director of Finance and Records.
Good morning. Joe Keel, Director of HR. This is, I don't know, third or fourth time. We've talked about this. It's basically the rewrite of the job description going from a CFO function to a Director of Finance function.
Joe, the questions that I have on this, the director, the, who would the director ultimately report to in this, in this, with this job description?
The mayor and deputy mayor.
And what was the, so is the, is the director considered a department head? Is that, okay?
Yes.
Do our other directors report to the deputy mayor as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that's within whatever job descriptions we have of the police chief and everyone else that they would report to the deputy mayor as well. I know that, Heather, you'd looked at this ordinances, or would you like to offer up to some thought about next steps here specific to the existing CFO position as well as where we are here?
Yes, so one of the things that we, in reviewing this, and we've talked about this in the, previously, is that we'll want to go in and create, likely at our next meeting, we'll have a first reading of a proposed ordinance, which would basically reestablish the position in an ordinance as well as the deputy director position. Right now, in our salary ordinance in two thousand and twenty, we created the position of CFO. We transferred some of those duties to the Municipal Relations Coordinator. And so we would just want to make sure we're carrying out the spirit of the reorganization. So just for the public, the reorganization eliminated the role of the clerk treasurer, which was an elected role. Under the Government Modernization Act, you have to assign those duties to another, you know, individual who's going to lead those responsibilities. So in our reorganization, those actually get assigned to the mayor, and then there's mandatory language that the mayor shall assign the duties of the clerk treasurer to the Director of the Department of Finance and Records. So we had that initially with the reorganization in our first mayor, with Mayor Papa, and then with Mayor Hawk. Then when we had Mayor Styron come in, we actually created the position of CFO. In that position, those duties were assigned to the CFO for oversight, and then some of the duties were assigned to the Municipal Relations Coordinator, just to make it clear smud. So we just need to go back and just make sure all that aligns back to the reorganization. And I think the best way we handle that is just create an ordinance that would basically set out the Department of Finance and Records clearly, which we do have, but currently it then references the CFO in a number of places, and we would just realign those responsibilities to the right person. So I'll be drafting that for your review and consideration. I'm also going to be sending it to Amy, to Joe, to you, and just to make sure that as we create these new positions, we're getting the right duties to the right person and have that well articulated. So there are some things, you know, and the duties for the clerk treasurer that are not specifically delineated in the job description, that is not, I think, unique. I mean, you don't always put all the statutory obligations in a job description, but we will want to include those when we do the ordinance. So we'll pick that up, and those are, and we'll make sure that we have a clear alignment of who is responsible in this new structure or newly reestablished structure of Director of Department of Finance and Records, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so I mean, I think the, to Joe's, to Joe's point, I mean, we've, we've seen this three or four times, and obviously Heather's weighed in on it. Understanding that we are going to need to establish an ordinance and make some modifications there. My personal thought, councilor says, is I know that Joe needs to post this job and needs to get these things moving forward, and that was certainly our objective, was to move forward without the CFO position. And that's going to be modified in our salary ordinance that we still have to finalize as well.
The salary ordinance has the deputy, has the, excuse me, the director position, not the CFO position. The current one that was the most recently approved.
Recently did.
Yeah.
So I would, I would like to see this, these positions move forward, and then at the next meeting, to Heather's point, we establish an ordinance that, you know, cleans up some of the language and just clears up, clears up the direction there. So.
Heather, I think we'd all like to expedite this hiring, and I know you've waited a long time for this. You were ready to post this, I think, before even the kind of Christmas break. These are, the, the job description and the ordinance are clearly correlated. You have to do the ordinance work. To Jason's point, can we pass this job description and get her going on this and then come back to the ordinance? Or is it dependent on the ordinance passing first before we can pass the job?
Well, yeah, we definitely can go ahead and pass this. Like, I don't see any issues or concerns with us doing this today. I know that's a priority for everyone to get those positions posted and filled. And I know that, you know, the team in the finance department is short-staffed still, and I'm sure they would be grateful to have an additional person there to help them. So I don't see any issues with that. I think, you know, going back to kind of our bigger picture project for the year, you know, really going into all the ordinances and cleaning up old references. For better or worse, we still have references in the ordinances to the Department of Finance and Records and the director. So it's just getting everything realigned and making sure that we're working with Joe and her team to know where, who is doing what duties and what positions will hold them so we can clearly establish that. I don't have any issues or concerns with moving forward.
And would your, your advice be then, I know there's, there's lots of things that need to be cleaned up, but maybe get this posted, but before hire that we have this ordinance cleaned up, so.
Yeah, I don't think you have to tie them that closely together. I think you're okay. Well, as long as we're getting them done timely so that, you know, there's clear authority for the position. We also have the positions in the salary ordinance, so those positions have already been approved and, you know, posted publicly and have a public hearing and.
That's what I was hoping.
Yeah.
Heather, Joe, we have a red line version. Have you seen the red line version, Joe?
Yes, it's actually Joe's document.
Red line version.
Yeah.
You created the red line?
Correct, yes.
Okay, fantastic then. That's great.
Any other questions from councilors? I would make a motion to approve the job descriptions of Director and Deputy Director of Finance and Records. Second, taken by Councilor Trailer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Up next is new business. The first item of new business is Matt Rowe, District Director for Congressman Jim Baird. Morning, Matt.
Morning. How are you guys?
Good, thanks. How are you?
I'm good. I was joking with Amy that this will probably be the quickest and hopefully smoothest part of the agenda all day. When talking about Congress, it's not always the easiest thing to do. So again, Matt Rowell, District Director for Congressman Baird, and as of a couple of weeks ago, Zionsville is now in the fourth congressional district, so we welcome you guys. Anything we can do, service to you, town, the citizens, obviously let us know. I'll leave my cards here with Amy. I'm always available. I think my cell phone might be on the back of some of these. So seriously, if there's anything that we can do, just let me know.
Great, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
That was quick. Up next is the Parks Department five-year master plan presentation. Director Jared Lockston.
Good morning, Town Council. Jared Lockston, Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. Last year, the Zionsville Parks and Recreation Department embarked on a comprehensive visioning, an update to our park system with the assistance of Runzdale, Ernst Berger, and Associates. The five-year master plan is a roadmap to capital and operational improvements within our parks and invites public input, stakeholder opinion, community polling, and ultimately adoption by the Park Board, Plan Commission, and Town Council as it is an update to our town's comprehensive plan. Should also mention that this five-year master plan is required for several DNR grants, which we have been recipients of in the past, and this would be the update to two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-eight. Today's presentation is comprised of the findings and recommendations of this next plan, and we welcome any feedback and discussion before we begin the adoption process. So with me this morning is Tricia McLallum of Runzdale, Ernst Berger, and Associates to discuss those findings.
It will not be the quickest presentation. I do have a high-level presentation for the master plan. We can. I do have a high-level presentation for the master plan. We can answer any detail that we need to. Let's see. Get this on the right screen. There we go. We have plenty of detail, so feel free to stop us, and I'll have Jared jump in if I miss anything. As Jared mentioned, this is a five-year plan, so we update the plan every five years. Today, we're going to talk a little bit about what the process was, the public input, all the engagement that we had, key takeaways that we heard from that engagement. We did take a detailed look at staffing for the department, and then a priority action plan for capital projects and improvements to the parks. A detailed ADA assessment was done, and then the next steps for the process. I will say, this is a five-year plan. It's unusual. The amount of detail and study that was done, it really is creating a comprehensive plan, which not all parks departments do. A lot of times, they're just meeting the minimum requirements for DNR, and this one does go above and beyond. The staffing study and that ADA assessment, that detailed assessment, really are above, beyond what's required. What that gives you is a comprehensive plan, so you're seeing, you know, all of the projects and all of the, the cost associated with the department and maintaining and operating it to the level that, that citizens have come to expect. And that Zionsville is known for, quite frankly. So the process was a four-phase process, included just inventory and analysis, visioning, where we worked through what, you know, the Parks Department wants to achieve in the next five to 10 years. Frameworks for how we're going to achieve that, and then the action plan, the actual roadmap for how we get there. Public input, there was a lot, a lot of different options and a lot of different ways for people to give us their input. We had a steering committee, which had a couple of members from the council here on the steering committee. And we met throughout the process, and they provided oversight for that process. We had three public open houses here at Town Hall with a total of 72 attendees. We were at the farmer's market, which is very successful. A whole lot of people stopped by the booth. Mindy and her crew had the creek stomper and the bubble blower going, so that helped us to attract people over to our booth. We did have a virtual open house for the first and the second meeting. The first meeting had over 7,000 views with over 2,500 unique users. Of those people were hanging out on the website in about 30 minutes. So that tells you people, we're checking out the plan and, and offering their input for what they wanted to see. Part of that was a community survey, and you can see there the responses that we had. We had actually 571 responses. We also did three short surveys to some particular groups, just to get their thoughts and opinions. And then our second virtual open house, along with our second open house, was presenting the proposed recommendations and getting people's thoughts, and then also trying to establish priorities for what people wanted to see happen next. Key takeaways from all of those, there are some, you know, common themes that seem to rise to the top from all the public input. And that was more trail connections to the Big Four rail trail. You guys have never heard that before, I'm sure. Seems to come up in all the, the public engagement. More trail connections to parks. There is still demand for a community center, some kind of an indoor aquatic center. Carpenter Nature Preserve, lots of support for the potential of Carpenter Nature Preserve. But then also more basic amenities in parks, like restrooms and drinking fountain, drinking fountains, and just seating and shelters. Still a high demand for natural areas and preservation, which is interesting, because that's, you know, Zionsville has a lot of that. People enjoy that, and they still want to see more of that. People also recognize that there are areas of town, especially out in the north, and then out in the Perry Township area, that don't have parks. And that we need to be looking for how we're going to incorporate parks into those areas. Staffing study, I'm going to show a whole lot of data to you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to kind of look at this, because it is a lot to take in. The basis for the staffing study, we looked at benchmark cities or towns that were similar to Zionsville. And then we also looked at NRPA metrics to get an idea of how Zionsville compares in terms of staffing. And I don't think there'll be any surprises here, but definitely stop me if you have any questions. So these are the towns that we looked at, and you can see the population. Westfield is a little bit higher there, but, you know, for the most part, pretty even in terms of population. Number of parks, again, a pretty, pretty even mixture. It's hard to get an exact match when you're talking about parks. That is one thing that NRPA says. Parks are very unique, and they're very unique for residents and what they want. And topography and, you know, all those things add into it. Total park acreage, again, you can see, see Zionsville and Goshen are, you know, higher with Valparaiso, a little bit higher even yet. Interesting, I think, because it breaks down per population, acreage per thousand of population. Pretty even. You can see Merrillville and Westfield, they're quite a bit lower than what Zionsville is. This is important to look at, because when, again, we're talking about staffing, how many people does a town have, Parks Department have, to maintain their parks and trails? So the number of FTE employees per acre, FTE is full-time equivalent. So we take full-time and part-time and average it all out to a full-time equivalent. And this is looking at it again, per acre of park, just keeping in mind that that's, that gives you a metric. Not exactly, because facilities are different between the parks, but gives you an interesting metric to look at in terms of how many people are maintaining our acres of park versus how many people are maintaining acres of park in other towns and cities. Zionsville, in this, this particular example, is at the, the lower end of that. And again, just interesting to see operating budget for capita, because it helps us to break it down per population. And you can see Merrillville and Brownsburg are a little bit lower, but really, Zionsville and Westfield, those are all pretty, pretty even. Back to the FTE, this is an NRPA data that came, that comes from them. NRPA, I will say, we have to just keep in mind, to take it with a grain of salt. This is based on parks departments that report into NRPA. It is not an exhaustive list of parks departments across the United States. It is pretty extensive. A lot do report in, but just to keep in mind that this is those that are reporting in. And this is based on, across the nation, parks departments that are maintaining 251 to 1,000 acres in their parks. And you can see the lower end is 23.1, middle is about 48.4, and then the highest end of, of those departments is 94.7 FTE per acre of park. Zionsville's, or FTE, Zionsville's is 12.75. So not even half, kind of that, that lowest number there from the NRPA. This is just a breakout of how we came up, how you get to that FTE equivalent for Zionsville. Again, 30 employees, but it equals 12.75 full-time equivalent employees. That FTE is very similar to what it was five years ago, and even similar to, to five years before that. And this is just kind of a list of, so on the left side is those that are, have come online or are coming online here very soon. And then the other list is potential. These are the ones that we proposed as a part of the next five to 10 years. To keep in mind that those additional parks and additional acreages and amenities are coming online. And that's additional, you know, areas that the Parks Department will be maintaining and operating and also programming. Programming is another important thing to consider. In the last five years, just think of the number of programs that have been added for the town with the Parks Department. It's, it's a lot. And there has been additional staff, but just to keep the, I think the number of programs that have been added are even exponential to the number of staff that have been added. So this is an overall next five years is what we're shooting for, what the goal is. A proposed staff, and I'll show you here how, how we're proposing to do that. But that will get Zionsville Parks and Recreation Department up to 48.4 FTE, which is still in that mid-range for the NRPA average. And again, looking at sort of the, the bar graph to see how that would make Zionsville's staff compare with other cities. And that would have us up with Brownsburg and above Merrillville, Valpo, Westfield. So how do we do that? This shows you, next year's already been budgeted, so we, we skipped over next year and went to 2024. And this is a proposed roadmap to get us to that, that additional staffing with the department. That bottom line is a range. This is just an average of salaries. We know it, salaries are dependent on position and skill level. So this is just a range there at the bottom, but you can see at the bottom of 2024, 25, 26, and 27, the averages for what that would increase the budget for the Parks Department to add that number of employees each year. So the first, first year is 16, second year is 20, the next is 16, and then 10. And that 2025 is anticipation. You can see Carpenter Nature Preserve has its own staff. So if Carpenter comes online, gets the, the amenities that we have proposed, then these are the additional staff that we see that will be needed. Any questions? I blaze through that. Okay, I'll keep rolling. I did submit, along with the packet, some renderings. I'm just going to give you a, the action plan basically for the capital projects. So if you need to reference those renderings, I have copies too, that I can grab if anybody wants a, a hard copy. So this is looking at capital projects, and again, projects that are improvements to existing parks. Each year, it's a mixture of new projects or new amenities to existing parks, along with the, the smaller projects, for instance, in 2023, an improvement to the canoe launch there at Elm Street Green. Used to be a, a down tree that was there that kind of helped in that location, and it has since washed away. So that made this rise to, to be more of a priority. And then also ADA improvements. So part of the ADA assessment, there's a database that Jared will have to make those improvements. So you'll see, I left the ADA line blank, because that will be equally divided over the next five years. So we just left that out so that you can see, we're trying to, you know, keep an even progression of proposed projects. And even a lot of those, we're calling long-term, so they'll be outside of that five-to-10-year range. Now, keep in mind.
Tricia, excuse me. I, I just have a question, the, before you move off of this. I noticed that it says Carpenter Nature Preserve land purchase at 5.5, then estimated cost 6.5. Do we have the appraisals for that back yet or no?
Yes, we requested an updated appraisal in October and received that in November. So the updated appraisal was slightly more than from 2021, as you can imagine. So it was originally 5.6, and the new appraisal was 6,022,000. So with the, the bargain sale price on that of 1.5 million, we're looking at 4.5 and 22,000 for the, the land acquisition of that.
And if you check my math, you'll notice I left that out of the total there at the bottom. Again, that kind of kicks it into a new category, and we're trying to get an even progression of improvements over the five years. 2024, so you'll see there at the, the bottom of the sheet, we're talking about what these proposed improvements are. That includes additional parking, additional paving out at Starkey Nature Park to improve and expand that parking lot, additional pickleball courts and restroom building out at Mulberry Fields, and this would be a year-round. So it wouldn't shut down in the winter, like the, the current one does there at Splash Pad. And then Zion Nature Sanctuary, the pavilion that is out there needs some repairs. It's been there for a while, and it's just getting to the point that it needs repairs to extend the life of that. And that gives us with a total of around 2.2 to 4.5 million for that year. The range is because, as we've seen in the last couple of years, prices increase, you know, prices can really be all over the board. We also provide a range in case another project at the, you know, closer to the end that we have said needs to be done in the fifth year, ends up being done in the second year, the budget of that second-year project, then goes to the fifth, is going to be on the higher end. So that's why you're seeing a range there in terms of, of cost for the projects. 2025, we have the golf course, the clubhouse and drainage improvements. That that's the, the big project for that year, and then Creekside Nature Park, some entrance improvements, just to open it up, get rid of some of the invasives, and just improve that parking lot there at Creekside Nature. 2026, Holiday Nature Sanctuary, getting those improvements done, which are, it is going to be a nature sanctuary. So they're, they're not, it's a parking lot, shelter, and some walking trails that would be occurring there. And then we did propose a new, calling it a trail. It's a mixture of roadside trails and then greenways. The vacant Holiday Road Pleasantview Road Trail that same year, and again, I have incorporation with, in coordination with Street Department. And then Turkeyfoot Nature Park Bridge repairs. Again, that bridge is, needs some repairs to extend the life on it. 2027, Heritage Trail Park Splash Pad and restroom building there too, which would give the town a restroom building, trailhead facility at the more the northern end of the Big Four. And then with the completion of the trailhead there at Zionsville Road at the southern end of the Big Four rail trail. Carter Station pathway improvements, and then some improvements to the American Legion Crossing, which includes a potential digital kiosk, which would be a memorial there at the Legion Crossing. And then long-term, this is a five-year plan, but we always look further out than that. I say 10 years, sometimes it's 20 years. Some of these projects that are listed on here, you know, need things like fundraising to be done. Some planning that needs to be done in the next five years to make it possible to happen in the next 10, 15 to 20 years. So that's why we go ahead and look at these projects and plan these projects out and give them budget. The other example is if a grant, a new grant comes out from the state or the federal government that one of these projects might be perfectly suited for, it gives you the flexibility to already have that plan, you know, tear it out of the, the master plan, show that you've, you know, you've done your work, the justification for why that's in there, and submit that project to where it might rise up to one of those first five years, instead of being one of the long-term projects. Any questions? So the ADA assessment, I'm not going to go into these, but I just wanted to show you an example of how detailed this is. And as I mentioned, for each one of these, you know, underlying topics, Jared will have a database. And he and his crew will just start chipping away at this database. They'll tackle, you know, the easy ones that they can do themselves in-house first. And then those that resurfacing a parking lot, restriping a parking lot that might need a little further planning will fall a little bit lower on the list, but they will be distributed across the five years. So this is Elm Street Green, and it's a 10-page report of the things that need to be improved to meet ADA compliance, but it's even a step beyond that. There are some things that you can do to make them even more accessible, not just meeting the minimum requirements to make them more accessible. The interpretive sign that's along the side of the trail, adding sound, you know, adding some other cues other than just a sign to read can make that more accessible to, to people with different disabilities. So flip through that real quick, and then that should be, and even spacing of picnic tables. So next steps, we did submit the first, the first few chapters of the book to DNR for their review. They, they go through just looking for compliance. They do make some recommendations for how to make the plan better, which is always great. And then final documents submitted needs to be done before April 15th. We can do it anytime between now and April 15th. We will have review from Park Board, Planning Commission, and you guys will need to get that final review from DNR before the plan is actually adopted by everybody. Did I miss anything, Derek? Any questions?
I've got a couple. Just, I, I was on the steering committee, and thank you for, for all of your help on this. But I was a little surprised to see the Cato property on there as, as a park, just based on our, our meetings, that I, I thought that at the most, that might have a, like, sunflower field or something like that. But I, I just am adamant that we not put anything on that. But I I just am adamant that we not put anything on that property to attract people. The reason being this particular property is not near the end of the runway. It's at the end of the runway for the airport. I think it's a huge mistake and would only take one accident to make it a huge tragedy at that park. So I'm I'm adamantly against anything that attracts anybody to that property. So that's not really a question, but more of a statement. The other thing is the did we, no, it's is it in later the staffing levels that you're, or was that? I don't know how, I know we we got two PowerPoint slides. I didn't know if you were going to go over both of them or not, but the yeah, the the staffing levels are a concern for me, and I I expressed that in our meeting, but I just want to do it on public record too. We're talking about going from roughly twelve full-time employees to forty eight over the course of five years. That's a lot, and that's that's a concern to me. So I don't know if we can make that like, I guess what, you know, once we put it in the plan, my assumption as town council, yeah, as a member of town council, once we put it in the plan, my assumption is that next year when we go through the or later this year, when we go through the budgeting for twenty twenty four, that we would see sixteen additional people requested for the budget. I just don't see that happening. I mean, just knowing how, you know, what we go through in the budgeting process. So I guess my my question would be, since this is a plan and it's not called a wish list, it's a plan. Maybe we should find a way to make that more of a realistic number that we can actually shoot for. I just don't, my personal thought is it's not realist.
That that's a completely fair point, and and the staffing study was to be an objective look at national standards and then apply them designs both specifically, as well as our regional neighbors and where they are in their capacities. A great point that was brought up at the last unit committee is the contractual equivalents that we have to equal out some of these staff members. So the the town does have a mowing contract, so we we contract out those services. And certainly, there is an FTE equivalent for all those hours in that contract. So we just, I think we just need a better dictate what that is existing today and how this could be supplemented in the future as well.
Yeah, I just don't want, yeah, I I don't want to see the five-year plan adopted and then the council deny the the expenditure for the additional full-time employees and point back and say, but it was in the five-year plan. Yeah, I don't want to see us getting that that kind of a predicament.
That's completely fair.
Yeah, my my understanding was the, when we approved the funding for this was that this was so that, obviously, to get a vision and to get a plan, but because we would miss out on grant opportunities. And I would I would echo Council Trailer sentiments and, you know, the the staffing. This is this is a, this is unaggressive, and I feel like aggressive and expensive, you know, next next five years for for the parks. So hopefully, a lot of this stuff can come through grants because I I mean, if 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 I'm, to your point, at the end of the year, when we're doing budget, I have a really hard time putting it it'll just, it'll just be difficult for me to support a lot of a lot of this stuff if it's coming out of out of pocket as opposed to through grants, so.
And and that's a completely fair point as well, but to not include it, you know, this was the ask of the community. This is their request, and it's our privilege to find a way to make that happen. So a good point, the last five-year master plan is when that was adopted in twenty eighteen, the rail trail project was multiple millions of dollars beyond our cash capacities. That project was bonded by town council, but in addition, we did receive a next level trails grant, which wasn't even announced when that plan was wrapped up. So certainly, if if it's not in the plan, we don't have a path forward. But we are, we are more than happy to find creative ways and jump on every opportunity to make these projects happen. And and every plan, there is a project or two that doesn't get completed in those five years. The Elm Street Canoe Launch is a great example of that. But for the most part, this is our roadmap, and we and we work towards those goals.
I just, thanks, Tricia, and I would call out Jared Parks and the team along with Counselor Trailer. I was able to be a part of this. Process was incredibly diligent. Not just strategic in the amount of time, you can see everything that went into this. And obviously, it's super robust and super expensive. I don't think that the the intention or the reality was that every dollar amount that you see was going to come from Zionsville. And and Jared, you have been incredible at securing grants, and I know there's a lot of money out there. So hopefully, we'll continue to do that to plug it in. But to Brian's point, is this, how much are we committing to when we put this plan? Or how much is this is kind of like, this would be ideal. We know we're part of, we're proud of the Parks Program here. I think it's a strong part of our identity. It's a strong part of the quality of life of folks in Zionsville. They do want this. I I would especially thank you guys, because particularly Brian and I, who are sitting there thinking about the dollars as we're going through this project. And we did ask that, as you were getting community input, that folks were kind of tasked with, how would they prioritize spending? If you remember this, it was kind of like, it was even an exercise where you have so much money. What, where would you spend your dollars? Because, you know, my my experience has been that all of these projects are going to get high scores if you just ask people, do you think this is a good idea for Zionsville? Sure, it's a great idea for Zionsville, and they're going to see high scores, but we can't do it all. And how would you prioritize ranking these things if you were in charge of the budget? So I thought that was was appreciated that you guys kind of took that on. It was interesting to see where people would spend the dollars if they were the ones kind of behind that. But clearly, it's not enough to go around for everything. I do think you have to chase other dollars, but they are out there, and you're very good at finding them. So I would just feel to be a part of the process. There's a lot on here. If all this came to fruition, it would be incredible. It may not all, but when you just kind of sit back and absorb that this, all of these things would greatly enhance Zionsville's brand, our reputation, or quality of life. And I hope it all happens, it may not. But thank you for just a very, very diligent process, and I appreciate you saying that. Not everybody does it this way. This was, this was a very, very, very strategic process. One of the more really robust processes I've ever part of, so thank you.
Just want to make a comment that Zionsville Parks Department is is very robust here in Zionsville, and it's very important to my constituents, even though we're spread throughout the town of Zionsville. But I I want to thank you for this presentation. It was very thorough. I'm of the opinion that I like to protect and approve our current existing assets before we take on new projects. But that being said, this this lays out lots of plans for advancing current projects like the, you know, the, I guess, the canoe launch. Actually, I had a question about that, the canoe launch. Is there, so there's a launch, is there an exit involved with that that budget pricing as well?
Lot of lot of portaging.
Yeah, so I've I've got constituents that are very interested in that. They love our waterways, and I just see that on there, that little blip is very important to me as well. But, you know, to see Carpenter Nature Preserve, the well-thought-out plan that's going into that. Little concerned about the permanent staffing or the staffing that's going to be involved with that. You mentioned, you know, hiring the mowing crews and and the delta, the, you know, the way of calculating labor hours. That's my biggest concern for for that. But other than that, I think this is very well thought out, and I appreciate, I appreciate the counselors that were involved in that as well. And but definitely the staff, and I'm friends with Mindy, and I think Mindy is a great person for the programming. And I look forward to seeing what she can do and maximizing her ability. So thank you.
Thank you all.
I have a question that was actually posed to me by a resident earlier this week, and since I've got you here, I'll ask it.
All right.
I know that there were a lot of like polls and things done for this. The question that I received was if we have done a usage study, like an actual usage study that more scientific than a than just a polling of our parks. Have we done that?
I think it's usually been public polls.
Public polls, okay, all right.
But we are working towards trail counters because that data is going to be so crucial moving forward. So there will be one of those as part of the widening, and it might actually be sponsored by a grant from the Pathways Committee. We're working with them. So definitely collecting more and more data to support these initiatives. That's partially why the staffing study was in here as well. And just to understand that as we grow, we're we're going to need more hands on the ground as well. And like I mentioned with the contract services, but we also rely on our community. And in twenty twenty two, we had over two thousand and fifty hours, no, no, sorry, over two hundred, two thousand and eighty hours of volunteer hours within our park system. So more than one full-time physician, forty hours a week in a in a year of our community coming out and helping us in our parks. So we understand it takes a village to make all these things happen, especially when we look in the larger arena of public safety and our roads and all the other departments that also need funding. So we're just happy to keep moving the torch forward.
I'd make one final comment that I don't know that was super clear in the presentation, but I really enjoyed the vision of this. And of course, we have an opportunity to get out in front of our our planning, particularly as we enhance and secure new assets. But the interconnectivity of these parks, and and I don't even know if we settled on that, but a lot of the conversation as we mapped out where all the assets were to make sure that everything was accessible. At some point, how would we connect these with trails so that you could kind of move throughout Parks Department Hall kind of via the trail system? And getting out in front of that, particularly even as we think about, you know, there's a lot of real estate still in Zionsville. How might we want to preserve more park space? And, you know, particularly folks who live, you know, out west of town, like, how do we bring them into this on the trail system? So I I just thought that the interconnectivity of allowing people to move through the Parks Department via trails was also just incredibly, a lot of foresight going on there. And I don't know if that was clear, that there's a lot of interconnectivity in the planning to tie this together, and that was, I think, very innovative.
Thank you, yeah. I don't believe it was presented today, but one of the concepts from the plan was a basically a park trail. So with a couple of roadside pathways and things like that, we can actually make a parks loop to all of our, nearly all of our parks in Eagle Township. So that's incredibly exciting to have that new opportunity for the community to get from park to park safely off-road by pedestrian or or cycling.
I will say the Pathways Committee met last night, and that is actually an agenda item for twenty twenty three to look at those interconnectivity. And maybe we can work with the Parks Department a little closer to see if that that's something we can help create. It's a little bit of a challenge with regards to roadway pathways versus what's a park pathway. In fact, we're working on a bicycle-friendly application, and I really appreciate your help and Lance Lance's help with that as well. That some of that information is convoluted because some of them are funded by DPW dollars, and some of them are funded by parks. So it's a little bit complicated for that, that, and we really appreciate your help on that. But connecting these parks through pathways is something that we've, we, it is our agenda to do that. Very challenging, though, with regards to private property owners, developers, developing land, and then obviously, safety with the DPW in the road. So thank you.
Is that a quick question? Could you bring up the two thousand twenty three plan? What's going on the next twelve months?
All right. And again, to reiterate that, these were just placed in sequence concerning priorities as well as cost. So there's a balance between new and old. So all these things are movable. So we did receive some feedback that, you know, the the golf course clubhouse was in twenty twenty five, and that that building certainly had end of life now. So as opportunities come, we will definitely jump on those.
But yeah, so are the, is there anything on here that we should be prepared for that you're going to ask for?
Yes, so tomorrow on the Park Board agenda, there will be the agenda item of an update to where the Carpenter Nature Preserve process is right now. And within that is a document of the declaration resolution for restarting the bonding process. So the Park Board will vote on that, whether they move forward. If they choose to approve, they will have a public hearing in February. And upon information collected in that, then it'll be before you all at later meetings in March. So we we are hoping to move forward with the Carpenter Nature Preserve, at least the acquisition. We have some very exciting news concerning grants to help support that and make our local dollars go much further. And we'll have all that information to you shortly.
Great. Just side note, was Winterfest attended? Do we have bigger attendance this year than last year?
Slightly lower attendance this year, unfortunately. Did miss two of our biggest days when school is out because of the negative temperatures. But we're still waiting on a little bit of the invoices to come in and the credits. So once I have that full financial picture, I will present that to you. But it was very well attended. We had a outdoor makers market, which had over two thousand people show up to support local vendors, which that was really exciting. That was our first time doing that, fingers crossed it went fantastic. So more for that very soon.
Anything else?
Counselors.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
Up next, a new business is consideration of appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees. Counselors, you've received those. I will give you a quick update. We do have one vacancy that we need to fill on the non-discriminatory practices review board. That's a one-year term, and I have asked a couple of folks to fill that. But just timing was as such that they couldn't get back in time for this meeting. So as we, we are able to approve this list and then come back and modify it later. I would take a moment just to thank everybody who currently serves, who decided to continue to serve. It it is sometimes, and we've got two and a half pages worth of appointments here. So there's quite a few, quite a few appointments. Vice President Burke and I met to go over these, and I appreciate the input from councils as well. But yeah, the folks that that decided to step up and serve on these boards and commissions, certainly appreciate your commitment to the town. And for those folks that requested to be appointed to boards and commissions and were not appointed, certainly as we have other opportunities come up, we we go right back to that list first and foremost. So I appreciate everybody's interest there. Are there any questions or concerns or from counselors? I just request that we we do a hold on the Pathways Committee on their appointments for this as well. If I can just get another two weeks until our next town council meeting to get that fully vetted and approved. So we would have, you want to hold, put a hold on everybody on the pathway committee? I would say that's probably the fairest way to do this, yes, okay, in this, in this, in this instance. Heather, I'm assuming there's no problem with approving the list with the exception of the pathway committee?
There is not.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, Counselor Milton, you're, you're the town council member on that, so I have no problem with that. Any other questions or comments from counselors? Otherwise, I would make a motion to approve the appointments with the exception of the pathway committee. Second by Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those pose same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Up next is other matters. Are there any other matters from counselors? Up next, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we'll make a motion to adjourn, second by Counselor Cole. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those pose same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. The next regular town council meeting is scheduled for Monday, February sixth, twenty twenty three, at seven PM in Zionsville Town Hall Council Chambers. Final notice will be posted in compliance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Thank you.